Good evening, everybody. Welcome to a regularly scheduled board meeting of the East Windsor Regional School District. Our meeting is now in session. Written advance notice of this meeting was provided at least forty-eight hours ago. Such notice provided the time, date, and location of this meeting and included the agenda to the extent it was known at the time. Notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with law. Minutes of this meeting are being kept by the Board Secretary and will be made available promptly to any member of the public requesting them from the Board Secretary at twenty-five A Leshen Lane, Hightstown, New Jersey. Minutes will be provided at cost and accordance with board policy. Are there any board members present who believe this meeting to be in violation of the Open Public Meeting Act? There are being none, we may proceed. In compliance with the fire code of the state of New Jersey, I call your attention to the emergency exits for this room which are located in the back leading to the parking lot and to each side of us. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, and justice for all.
Item C.
Having read the materials received, I move the agenda be approved as submitted.
Second.
Please pull the board.
Ms. Concepcion.
Yes.
Ms. Drake.
Yes.
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 Yes. Before we move to item D, I did just want to note that one of our board members, Bob Laverty, is attending virtually, which was approved at our last meeting. Item D.
I didn't get to give my vote. Yes.
Item D.
Be it resolved that the East Windsor Regional School District may hold two closed sessions at this meeting. These closed sessions concern personnel, HIB report of March tenth, twenty-twenty-five, and administrative introduction. Minutes of these closed sessions will be made available to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
Second.
Pull the board, please.
Ms. Concepcion.
Yes.
Ms. Drake.
Yes.
Ms. LaRusso.
Yes.
Mr. Laverty. Ms. Mahary.
Yes.
Ms. Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Weeks.
Yes.
Ms. Lands.
Yes.
We will now move on to item two, which is a preliminary budget adoption presentation. Refresh. My apologies, my board doc's agenda needed to refresh. We will now move on to our student representative report.
Good evening, everyone. As always, it is a pleasure to provide updates on the student body. Just an update on Sanji, he is currently competing at the FBLA States Competition, so today it'll just be me, but I have lots of updates to share. First, I would like to discuss the incredible performance of our HHS DECA students last week. We have a total of twenty-two students competing at the international level at Orlando, Florida, and this is the highest number of students winning in the history of our program. And as the current president, this has been an incredible achievement for us all. Next, for the musical, another student area to highlight is how proud we are of our students who are preparing for the musical. This year, they will be acting in Chicago with the showtimes of March twentieth, twenty-first, and twenty-second at seven P.M. and then on March twenty-third at two P.M. For students, tickets are ten dollars, and for general admission, it is twelve dollars, all on the ticket spigot link. Make sure to come and support the HHS Arts. Next, this Friday, the STEM Club will be hosting their annual three-v-three basketball tournament on Friday, March fourteenth, from five P.M. to eight P.M. It is their biggest fundraiser of the year, and it is a great opportunity for students to play basketball with their friends with the chance of winning some fun prizes, so make sure to participate. Now, a brief update on athletics. Spring sports is officially started as of today. We had our baseball team, our golf team for both boys and girls, our lacrosse team for both boys and girls, and softball, tennis for boys, track and field for boys and girls, and we had boys volleyball all play and try out today, so good luck to all of our teams. Additionally, we would like to congratulate Senior Michael Fowler, who was a recipient of the NSF Scholar Athlete Leader Award, accompanied by Coach Fulch to receive this award. Michael is also invited to attend the sixty-third Annual George Wash Scholar Leader Athlete Award Dinner in March, where he and nineteen other recipients will be considered for the Delval NFFHF Top Scholarships. We are very proud of him and all of his athletic contributions. Finally, just a quick note on testing. From today, March tenth through Thursday, March thirteenth, students will be testing and following unique schedules based on their academic needs. So eleventh grade students will be taking the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment, or the NJGPA. Multilingual or ESL students will be participating in access testing, and then twelfth grade students in need will be working on their graduation portfolios. So for the students not testing, they will be following a modified schedule up until Thursday. This concludes the end of the report. Thank you, everyone, for listening to the report, and we look forward to seeing you again at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thanks so much for that report. Does anyone have any questions? There being none, we will now move on to our budget, preliminary budget adoption presentation.
Okay, good evening, everyone. So it is that time of the year where we begin, I shouldn't even say begin, but formally begin to kind of communicate preliminarily where we are in terms of preparing a budget for the upcoming school year. So I'm going to start things tonight, just kind of laying the foundation in terms of what we believe the budget represents, some areas that we've addressed for the current school year, and then talk a little bit about some proposed areas that we're looking to focus on for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Then I'll turn things over to our business administrator, Paul Todd, who will kind of get into some of the details regarding the numbers and some of the approaches we're looking to take as it relates to kind of crafting a budget. So I'll just talk a little bit about a budget. This is typically what we try to focus on as it relates to what we believe the budget represents. Obviously, there are several areas that we want to consider. For us, obviously, it's a significant planning tool. It enables the school district to operate and have programs to support the needs of our students. Obviously, it reflects our values as a community. We definitely have to prioritize our resources. We also have to contingency plan, just for, just in case certain things may surface, certain emergencies and things we need financially. We obviously have to be good stewards of the taxpayer dollar, so we definitely need to be fiscally responsible. We also just need to make sure that we have some buffers and potential safeguards. So for us, as an educational institution, we are undergirded by a mission statement. The mission statement is here, just in terms of addressing areas that we believe kind of drive where we're going. Obviously, we need to be a safe environment, inclusive, focused on best practices, with obviously the intention of ensuring that our students are building and growing academically, but also socio-emotionally, so they can be successful and productive citizens. That kind of serves as the cornerstone of what we believe the resources are that we will allocate and dedicate to supporting that mission. So just to refresh everyone's memories, last year during this time, throughout this time, but especially during this time, we engaged in the strategic planning process with our community. We had several meetings to shape and create the roadmap for the course of about five years regarding what would steer and enable us to kind of have a sense of a pathway towards supporting the needs of our students within the, within the school district. So the first goal area I'll just highlight was student-centered learning. And for each of these goal areas, we have established objectives as well as action plans to support those. We provided an update probably about a month and a half ago, excuse me, regarding the progress in all of the, all of the goal areas. So first goal area seems to be understandable, the fact that we are focused on learning and student-centered learning is goal one. Just talks about, you know, having rigorous instruction focused on collaboration, real-world application, engagement, and active inquiry. And just talks a little bit about how we'll measure the growth of our students throughout that process. Second and third goal areas, well, the second one focuses on people, right? The human resource component of the school district, and that'll be staffing. Obviously, we maintain a focus on wanting to recruit, retain staff who reflect the rich background of our student population. Third goal area is connected to community engagement. Our strategic planning process really served as an example of that community engagement, but wanting to make sure that we kind of foster those lasting district-wide relationships, connecting people of diverse backgrounds throughout that continuum of learning within the school district. Fourth goal area was related to facilities and finance. I guess tonight is a finance discussion. So ensuring that we are sustaining safe and secure learning environments while remaining fiscally responsible. One of the areas that we're looking at is continuing to kind of upgrade our facilities, but we're also seeking some space related to facilities as we're looking at launching our universal preschool. Fifth goal area is related to culture, climate. This kind of just reiterating the importance of inclusive and respectful climate for all stakeholders that values the diversity of thought and opinion. So a couple of highlights, or several highlights from the current school year. So these were some areas under the personnel umbrella that we asked the board to support as we were transitioning or preparing for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. We had some addition of a council at the K-two level, just to kind of support the social-emotional development of our students. There was a need for an elementary special educator. We did add a couple of councils to the middle school for a similar reason in terms of supporting proactively looking to support where students were developmentally. There was a need for a six-eight language arts teacher. We had some, we had some felt need for some educational assistance mainly in our special education environments at the elementary level. And we, we did have a need for an additional transportation dispatcher primarily based on the volume. We're fortunate to have our own fleet in the district and a dispatcher who also can drive when necessary, serve to kind of support that operation within our district. From a facility standpoint, these were some of the areas that we allocated funds for, for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. HVAC upgrades in the high school auditorium. Also, the replacement of the scoreboard out at the football stadium. Really kind of just is aging and was kind of inconsistently operational. We also allocated dollars for transformers. We needed to replace some transformers here at the high school as well as preparing for our e-buses. We needed to have some, some upgrades at the transportation yard in preparation for those four buses, as well as the charging stations that come along with those. The Ethel McKnight School, we needed to replace the blacktop on the playground, which was just, just worn and aged. In addition to at GNR, we had to kind of modify, upgrade, and make more inclusive our pre-K playground environment. So kind of had to change the location of that, but also needed to invest in some new equipment. We also needed to identify a new home for our central registration team and Buildings and Grounds Department leadership, who currently reside in the White House, which is very old building. So if you recall, the board recalled that we have identified a property that we're in the process of finalizing the purchase in Hightstown, which we're excited about, which will enable us to kind of shift those folks into a more up-to-date structure that I think will be a better work environment. In terms of, I guess I'll just talk about where we are. So typically, when we have, when we talk about the budget, so right now you're looking at highlights from the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, which is typically, it's this school year. Those projects typically will be slated to begin either towards the end of the school year or the summer. So when you think about, so as we're going to talk tonight about, you know, the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, typically those facilities projects will not begin until twenty-six. So these projects here will be summer twenty-twenty-five projects. Obviously, we're in the, the process of planning those. Obviously, I referenced the, the property connected to the central registration, but in terms of projects, those will be summer, summer projects. So as we look ahead in terms of the budget that we're in the process of preparing now for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year, not too much in the name of personnel. And I will preface this by saying that we're still in the process of reviewing and determining where we can have cost savings, but also, you know, assessing needs. So we have gone through the process of looking at some positions that we, we supported or initiated in the past and determined whether or not we, and these are some positions that we have not filled in some cases. And we went through the process or in the process of determining whether or not there is a need to actually replace those. So the positions you have in front of you on the screen are, you have a bilingual position at GNR. We have a request for a special education teacher at Creps. That's related to a new program that we're establishing, a self-contained program. So it appears that we will need to hire a teacher and also an educational assistant to support the launching of that program. I have educational assistants there listed, just as a, really just as a safeguard. In addition to the self-contained setting in the MHK, we anticipate that during the year, there may be the need for us to, to recruit some educational assistants to support the needs of students, but also programs, primarily at the elementary level. I have extracurriculars listed here. These are also tentative. If you recall, the board was supportive in establishing a middle school football program that launched this current school year. As we were in the process of identifying interest for football and other things, we discovered last year the potential need to establish lacrosse program at the middle school. This has not yet been solidified, but we're in the process of just kind of confirming the, the level of interest. And obviously, if we're looking to pursue that, we would want that to be a boys' and girls' program. So if that's the case, we would need to support the stipends associated with the head coach, assistant coach, and then some supplies that come along with that. Not, not a huge financial lift, but wanted to be planned for nonetheless. As it relates to the high school program, based on numbers, it appears that we would need an additional winter track coach. And we're looking to establish an intramural soccer program. We have a significant amount of interest at Hightstown High School for the sport of soccer. So what we're discovering is that each fall season, there's a significant number of students who obviously just are unable to make it onto a team, just based on this year's volume. We have over a hundred and fifty students that try out for soccer. So we are looking to say, okay, if recognizing that level of interest, can we create something that is fun, competitive, housed here at the high school? Obviously, we're looking to, to plan to, to have someone or a team advise that intramural program. As it relates to facilities for the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, so if you recall, for the past, I'd say, four years, we've engaged in renovating GNR. And a very, I call it a seasoned facility. So it has great character, but, but an old building. So from an infrastructure standpoint, but also an aesthetic standpoint, we've needed to invest in making that a welcoming, but also reliable facility for, for students and our staff. And, you know, I'm pleased with the work that's happened there because I would say that this final phase will really, from an internal standpoint, we would have accomplished kind of a- kind of a, an interior upgrade across the entire building. So excited about that next phase for GNR. With WCB, we, we've mapped out for all of our schools from an HVAC standpoint. We've mapped out phases for upgrades because obviously it's, it's not realistic to do all that we need to do in one year. So we actually were scheduled to, to engage in this next part of the renovation at WCB. I want to say this past summer, but we were unable to identify someone that wanted to take on the work. So we're in, we have a next phase lined up at WCB for HVAC and other upgrades. As we've talked about before, we typically have been doing them in combination where we upgrade the HVAC while doing that. We upgrade the classroom space related to it with new lighting and some other areas within the classroom to kind of just bring it up to date. Once again, WCB is another one of our older facilities. In terms of parking lot, a couple of years ago, the budget supported us expanding and resurfacing the parking lot at Crebs to enable us to gain about a hundred additional parking spaces. EMK, in addition, if you recall, we talked about what we do on the blacktop for the playground this summer. Next summer, summer twenty-six, we're looking to resurface the parking lot, but also expand the parking lot. For those of you familiar, EMK is a relatively small parking lot that requires cars, staff members who routinely are in the building to park almost on the grass because we don't always have adequate spaces. So we're looking to invest in a resurface, but also an expansion. In terms of renovation of the high school, we have a practice field, a practice football field that is, I'll just say rough. The surface, not our turf field, but a grass field. The grass field is, it needs some care. So right now, it's, it's, it's one thing to kind of, you know, lack a grass growth, but this also has just some areas within there that are, that are not what we would expect in terms of safety, in terms of just some, some rock presence in some other areas. So we're looking to kind of have that redone in a way that can bring that back and have it operational where we feel comfortable with, with the level of where the soil and the grass would be. The last item that we're lining up is the rod grant HVAC work at the high school. If you recall, we received a grant to support this work, to offset the costs associated with this work. So we're in the process of launching that HVAC project during the summer of twenty-twenty-six. Any questions on those areas before I move forward? Okay. So I'll transition over to Mr. Paul Todd.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Daniels. Little click happy here. Okay. So what does our budget process look like? So every year, we, we like to say that we have a data-driven budget process. School and departments build budgets, zero-based budgeting from the ground up. We don't just take last year's budget, throw two percent on it, move forward. So we ask everyone to go back, review your budgets, and let's start over. Also, really, as you know, schools are labor-intensive. So a big part of our budget is what we call the PCR, the Position Control Report, where we list out every single position and the salaries that are in the negotiated contracts. Okay. So as you heard from Mr. Daniels' update and read in the newspaper, we lost about seven-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars in state aid. That's on top of the two million dollars that we lost last year. Now, just to remind everyone, that two million wasn't something that we already had, but we were promised that as part of the governor's budget address, and that changed last minute. We were surprised, as many districts in New Jersey were surprised, just because of the way the funding formula works and people really don't understand it and can't explain it. But I will do my best to tell you the where, but in the numbers and how they use some of their formulas, it's a little convoluted and no one really understands how they get to their numbers sometimes. So anyway, one of our biggest source of aid is called equalization aid. Equalization aid is aid that's intended to equalize funding, basically your ability to pay from some of the districts who are more affluent and have the ability to pay and some of the districts which do not. And equalization aid tries to balance that, that playing field between all those different school districts. So there's two components of this. The first part is what they call the adequacy budget. And our adequacy budget is really just a funding formula where the state takes our number of kids and then based on certain allowances, they work up to a number where they say, this is the budget we think you should have. And those are the numbers going past three years. So going back to the twenty-four budget year, we have ninety-nine million. And as we move forward this year, the calculation by the state was a hundred and fourteen million. And then you can see the growth of that adequacy budget every year, eight percent, seven percent, seven percent. So that growth has been very steady. What has really been changed for us is our local fair share as we talked about last year, and I'm going to dive in the next slide what that means because there's a couple components to that. And you can see the extraordinary growth that that has really taken off. Three years ago, that was fifty-eight million. Now we're up to seventy-six million. And if you look at the percent increases, ten, fourteen, fourteen, those are very large increases. But really what you want to look at is the growth in the adequacy budget compared to the local fair share. So if you look at FY twenty-four, we saw the adequacy budget went up eight-point-six percent and our local fair share went up a little more than ten percent. So pretty close, a couple percentage points, no big deal. It's why we didn't really notice anything. However, last year when we got our big shock, look at the percent change in the adequacy compared to our local fair share, it almost doubled. So while our adequacy budget grew seven percent, our local fair share grew fourteen percent, it doubled it. That's why we lost two million dollars last year. Same thing happened this year, grew another fourteen percent compared to a seven percent change in the adequacy, which is why we lost another eight-hundred-thousand dollars. So it's amazing when you look at what the government says our fair share, FY twenty-four, flashing forward to FY twenty-six, you're talking close to twenty million dollars more, which is really a, something we know that it's really good to live in East Windsor and Hightstown. It's a really nice place to live. So let's, let's dive into what that local fair share calculation looks like. There's two components. First component is called your equalized evaluation. So this is basically what the state says our market value is, not the assessed value. Your assessed value could be based on a number when maybe your house was built in nineteen-eighty-six. So what the state does is they take a sample of real estate transactions and they look at what the property is listed at and then what it's sold for, the current market. And what they try to do is they try to bring that old value up to current market standards. And that number for us, as everyone, I'm sure, types into Zillow every once in a while, we watch our housing prices grow, just like everyone across the, across the state. And you can see the growth in the equalized valuation. So going into FY twenty-five, property grew fifteen percent and then another fifteen percent for this calculation. Also, what they do is they tap into the New Jersey IRS and they look at everyone's tax returns and they accumulate that information by zip code. And you can see the growth in the district income. Once again, you can see a large growth, sixteen percent last year, thirteen percent this year. So that is how our fair share is growing so much. Before I move on, any questions on that? Because that's a pretty important on why we lost essentially three million dollars over the past two years. Okay. So I tried to mix our presentation up a little bit this year. It gets a little stale. So you'll see some old slides and some new ones in place of other ones. So this is an old slide. And you can see from year to year, our revenues have been going up one-point-six. This is our general fund levy, one-point-six, one-point-two, two percent. And then finally, this year, two-point-six. This is my eleventh budget presentation. This is the first budget we'll be presenting where we were actually be over two percent. We've actually had historically low tax levy increases compared to our noisy neighbors in the county. And I'll kind of get into that so you can see exactly where our levy increases have been compared to everyone else. So how are we getting that extra point-six percent? Because everyone says, oh, your increase can only be two percent, which is not necessarily true. It's two percent plus spending growth limitation adjustments or SGLAs. And basically in your budget, there's two ways you can grow your budget for enrollment, which we haven't really seen here. We have had very steady, flat enrollment, give or take, we're at five thousand, give or take, you know, fifty kids. We've hovered around five thousand for quite a while now. The, the other enrollment, the other SGLA is for health benefits. And as you know, we've talked, we've been very proud, we have our own self-insured health benefits, and this will be the fourth year in a row that we will have no increases because of health benefits. That's once again, very historic, and I'll be talking about that. But we do get a little adjustment. Now, in the past, we have not used them. So when you don't use them, it falls into what's called bank cap. And as I'm going to show you, districts in Mercer County have traditionally tapped into the bank cap where we have not. So this year, between the SGLA and bank cap, we're going to go a little above the two percent. And I, when I start showing you some numbers, it's going to be very impressive, even after losing three million dollars, that we're only at two-point-six percent. So this is just from an informal survey, me calling my comrade BAs throughout the county. This is preliminary tax information. This is not approved levy information. This is not, has not been reviewed by the county yet. So I just want to put that out there. This is preliminary information. So you can see where we are at two-point-six and then how it quickly escalates from there, that there is no one at or under two percent. That has been the trend for quite a while. And I think sometimes when you look at percents and you compare them, sometimes small numbers, it doesn't look big. But when you look as a percentage, I think it really becomes quite shocking that our, our next closest, Hamilton, their levy increase is fifteen percent larger than us. That's the next closest. And then it just escalates. And then when you go to Ewing, their tax increase is doubling what ours is. It's pretty shocking. So there's something called the user-friendly budget, which you can get on the state. You can go the past five years for every district in, in the state. So I pulled Mercer Counties and I looked at the levy from two thousand twenty-two and tracked it through two thousand twenty-three, twenty-five, excuse me. That's three fiscal years. That's three years of growth. We are the only district in the county who has an under-two percent levy growth over that period of time. We're at one-point-six percent. Once again, our closest is Hamilton and their levy increase is fifty percent greater than what we've looked at. And then the numbers quickly just escalate from there. There's no one even close. And when you look at Port Robbinsville, I mean, I'm sure everyone's familiar with the problems we're having next door, their increase is two-hundred percent larger than ours. So I think when you look at the value proposition, what we have to offer compared to what we ask for our taxpayers, over the recent past, we have been to say reasonable is, is very an understatement. So just some revenue points of interest. So we are at our two percent levy and on top of that, I talked about the bank cap and the SGLA. We're asking for an additional four-hundred-twenty-seven thousand, that's your point-six. This is not new, it started last year, but everyone, I guess, has seen that interest rates in the bank accounts has, has increased. Last year, we budgeted at least a million dollars. We're going to continue that. And when you look at the year-over-year document that I handed out to you, you can look at the history of our interest. Look what we earned three years ago, forty-one thousand dollars on a twenty-million-dollar bank float. It's almost embarrassing what we got. And now we're earning close to a million dollars. So that's, that has definitely helped out our budget that we were actually able to put in that kind of additional money to support operations. One of the things that we get is called extraordinary aid. That's something that is monitored by David Rowe. Every year, we get to submit to the state extraordinary costs for special education. It's usually out-of-district placements and then we get money back for that. Historically, once again, you can look in the revenue section of the document we've handed out. When you can, districts do not budget the full amount of that extraordinary aid because you never know what's going to come through the door. So we've always been very, very conservative with that number. We've probably received eight-hundred to a million dollars. We started off with a budget of around two-hundred thousand dollars, but as things have changed, as we start to normalize, as we come off those big state aid increases, we now have to kind of do things that other districts have been doing for years. And one of those is recognizing a larger piece of the extraordinary aid. So moving forward, we're going to treat extraordinary aid just like we do our IDA funding, where we budget eighty-five percent of the amount we received the year before. So we're still trying to be conservative and not recognize the whole amount. So this year, to help us out, we picked up another six-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand revenue to help offset the expenses. And then finally, as we know, we lost seven-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand in state aid. So those are the major changes with our revenue. Here's our total budget breakdown. Once again, you know, when you take a look at twenty-three, twenty-four with an eight percent growth, mostly that was because of capital projects. But when you look outside of that, you know, our overall growth in the budget is not, you know, extraordinary. We're usually talking somewhere around two percent overall spending. So it's very reasonable when you consider inflation and what everything's costing these days. I don't know where else you're going to get a two-point-five inflation factor. So I, once again, I think that's a feather to our, in our cap. All right. So one of the things I said I'd like to do a little differently this year, every year and around December, Mark and I get summoned down to the county office and we have a budget walkthrough, just to talk about current financial conditions, what-if scenarios. And they look at some factors. There's a guide out there, you can find it on the Department of Ed website. It's called the Taxpayer Guide to Educational Spending or the TGES. And it lists about twenty different factors for every single district in the state. What's great is they have this in Excel, so I can burrow down into that. So what we want to do is we want to compare us to like structures. So I can tell you, there are ninety-two school districts who fit the same operating structure that we have. The first one is, are you a K-through-twelve? Are you a K-through-six? Are you a regional high school district? And you're able to group everyone that way. So we are in a grouping of K-through-twelve. And then they go by your enrollment. First enrollment level cuts off around eight-hundred, then it goes from eight-hundred to about thirty-five-hundred, and then everyone else over thirty-five-hundred. So just to let you know, in Mercer County, enrollment-wise, you have the big three, West Windsor, Trenton, Hamilton, all ten thousand, not in our kind of area. Then comes us, we're about five thousand kids, so we're kind of unique in Mercer County. And then after us, everyone else in the county is three thousand-something. I'll say on average, thirty-five-hundred. So the average Mercer County district, taking out the big three, we're fifty percent larger than them. So we, we do not necessarily line up with them. So I can tell you, there's ninety-two school districts that are K-through-twelve, over thirty-five-hundred kids. That's who we're going to be comparing ourselves to. I think what the amazing thing, when you look at this first number, statistically speaking, it's a zero, the, the difference is way out in the decimal, so it doesn't even round. When you look at what we're spending budgetarily per pupil, I would say statistically, we're spending what everyone else is, the average of those ninety-two districts, which makes the rest of this comparison real easy because there really isn't anything we have to adjust for. So the first thing that it takes a look at, one of the indicators, is total classroom instruction. How much are we spending on classroom instruction? And you can see compared to the state average, we're putting more into the classroom than the average school district, almost six percent more than the average schools district. The next one is total classroom salaries and benefits. So that would be the instructional staff we put in the classroom. And you can see, while statistically very small, just one percent, we are basically at, just slightly above the state average of what, you know, we're paying our classroom talent. One of the numbers that jumped off to me, very surprising, however, what we're spending, the supplies that we're giving to our teachers and our kids, on average, we're giving eighty-three percent more in classroom supplies than, than the state average, and then another, almost forty percent in classroom purchase services. So I think those two numbers, you know, once again, I'm going to be talking a lot about, you know, feathers in our cap. These are definitely feathers in our cap, what we're providing our staff and our kids. So then people say, okay, well, the money's got to come from somewhere. So if, if that's what we're spending, where is that? So then people say, okay, well, the money's got to come from somewhere, so if that's what we're spending, where is that coming from? We have to be spending somewhere under the state average somewhere, because you've got to make it. Because if you're spending the total amount the same per kid, if some areas are over, where is it, where are you under? So I could tell you, and I've talked to a lot of my colleagues, they would say, yes, this is true. Total cost of spending on administration, we are almost ten percent less that we spend on administration here in East Windsor Regional School District. Than the average ninety-two school district, I think that's a big difference. When you look at administrative salaries and benefits, once again, ten percent less than the state average. Probably shouldn't be saying that to some of my administrative colleagues out there. You know, we talk a lot about, as Mr. Daniels talked about, we do a lot with our facilities, and we're really about upgrading things. Even after all of that, what we're spending on operations and maintenance, so this is our custodians, our maintenance staff, our regular maintenance of the facilities. We're still down almost ten percent from what the rest of the state is spending, and we're doing a lot. Finally, I think once again, feathers in our cap, these are negatives, but I think it's just a wonderful environment that we provide here. When you look at the ratio of students to classroom teachers, we are below, meaning there are fewer students per staff member, which is huge. You know, almost seven percent. And also the ratio of students to administrative personnel, right, our administrators are doing more with less, and they're also below the state average by three percent. So I think that's another impressive number. Okay, so expense points of interest. So Mr. Daniels talked about, right now, this year, our staffing is net zero FTE, while we've added some. We've made some reductions in some vacancy positions that we've carried for a while. So when you look at the total headcount on that position control report, it's going to balance out. Out of district tuition, we took a little hit this year, usually this is not something I've really talked about in the past eleven years. But this is one year where the special ed tuition has increased. Also, we've had an increase in our ESS substitute service by a million dollars. The next one is a good increase, our technology budget's going to be up close to a million dollars. We'll be kicking off the first leg installation of an emergency notification system. The high school is going to, you've probably seen some of the examples in the hallways, when you first come in with the digital signboards that are up in the hallways. That'll be eventually in every single classroom here at the high school, and as we roll, that will be the model that we roll through our other five schools. Once again, another feather in our cap, because of our health benefit, self insured, we've just been very lucky. Our health benefit rates will not increase, this will be the fourth year that we have not increased our health benefit rates. Which is important, because those rates tie into employee contributions. I could tell you, with our current spend, a ten percent increase in health benefits, which is not uncommon. The state health system is increasing somewhere around twenty percent a year. There's a big health insurance pool of self insured called the SHIF, they're about eighteen percent. And this year, we're at zero. So that would, if we were to pull a ten percent, that would be one point five million dollars additional that we would have to cover. That would be one point five million in reductions that we would have to make, if you take out typical ten percent being on the low end. That we are avoiding because of our self insurance, so that has been running very well for us. Thing of note, and this is just a cautionary tale, two years ago, we had about six million dollars in our budget of recurring revenue. That's levy money and state aid that was directed towards our facility projects, that's money we could count on every year. But as we've lost that three million dollars, that is no longer the case. So right now, our facility projects, and this will be the case moving forward, anything that we do comes from non-recurring revenue. That's, at the end of the year, we have a few dollars, we take that, we transfer it in the capital reserve, you'll see that as a line item in our revenues. That we're taking money out of capital reserve to fund our process. And also, we take some additional fund balances at the end of the year, move that forward. But the important note is, those are non-recurring. Those funds dry up as our budgets become tighter, as years go on, and we move further away from these years of the very big state aid increases we have. I'm sure that that money will dissipate as well, and you'll probably see fewer and fewer projects. Not sure when that'll happen, but somewhere down the line, I can assure you that will happen. Okay, so how are taxes shared? So we're a regional district, so our taxes are shared a little different way. So first thing is, there has to be a split between East Windsor and Hightstown. And how that works, and we talked about equalized valuation, this is another where it comes up. They look at the equalized valuation, and we get a report from the state, and they tell us, based on that, how we need to break our taxes up between the two municipalities. And there, you can see the history of where we've been. You can see, going back to twenty-three, the trend in Hightstown has been slowly, has been going down. And the Swinzer burden has been going up, and we can see this past year, that changed a little here for the first time in about three years. So I would say it's about an eighty-seven, you know, give or take, an eighty-seven thirteen percent split between the two municipalities. So what does that mean for your tax impact? So you can see the two indicated tax rates for twenty-four, twenty-five. Next two numbers are your, the last two numbers, I should say, are the averaged assessed house evaluations. Now, these are not equalized numbers, these are the numbers that are on the tax collector's books. Whenever your house was built, nineteen eighty-five, whenever the last time, if the house was older, we went through an assessment, an evaluation, that's what's on their books. So that's the average house. So basically, what you do is, you take your assessed evaluation, divide it by a hundred, multiply it by the rate, and that is basically how much you pay in taxes. So here is your estimated tax rates for the two years. More importantly, and once again, I think this is an incredible proposition, value proposition for what we offer. So the average home in East Windsor will be paying thirty-eight dollars more on next year's tax bill. Hightstown will be paying a hundred and ninety-eight more. Now, just a word of caution. When you see these rates and the average assessed evaluation, everyone probably wants to know, hey, what am I going to pay? Please do not go home, pull up Zillow, and whatever number is there, multiply it by those tax rates, because you're going to give yourself quite a shock. That's not what you want to do. So you almost need to, if you don't have your last tax bill, call your tax collector and ask them what your assessed evaluation is, not your current property value. And with that said, what are our next steps? So we'll have a vote tonight on our preliminary budget. If that passes, we will send it to the county. We have to the nineteenth to do that, so the business office has quite a bit of work to get still our supporting documentation in shape. So by the nineteenth, we need to have that down at the county office for review. They'll go through, they might make some changes. We're going to come back on April twenty-eighth, and that is when we will have our public budget adoption. So between now and then, you know, we will continue to review the data, spending trends. Same with the board, I know you'll be taking a look at the year-over-year, if you have questions on numbers, what happened to this, by all means, reach out to Mark and I. We'll be happy to answer your questions. So with that, we'll take whatever questions you have.
I have a question. Can you just clarify, what is this out of district placement expense, we had additional one point three million? Can you just tell me what that is?
Yep.
Thank you.
So if you remember, I went back to expense points of interest. Oh, there it is, the second bullet, out of district tuition went up one point three million dollars. So that's the increase that we saw on, you know, all our students who go out of district. Special education students who we have, who we cannot service their needs within the district, we send them to an out of district private school.
Okay.
And those rates generally are-
That's different from the Mercer County.
Much, well, they do the same thing, however, the other districts that we send to are from some of the more needier students. And those rates tend to be extremely higher than Mercer County. I wish everyone can go to Mercer County Special Services, because their rates are very reasonable, and that is our preferred destination. So yeah, it usually comes from the-
But it does include those schools as well, Mercer County schools. We prefer to send students to Mercer County Special Services, for obvious reasons, it's within the county, tends to be more reasonable. But, as Paul said, some of our students have more unique needs, and they need a more specialized program. So it's a combination of students who are going, who are attending those schools, and the tuition increases that those schools are charging us.
Okay, thank you.
Mark, can you speak to the million dollar increase for the substitute services, what has impacted that increase?
You know, we're in the process of kind of analyzing that, what we've seen initially is that, you know, we'll kind of use COVID as the baseline to some degree. When we came out of COVID, we really didn't have a lot of substitute availability, and that was difficult. Obviously, in increasing years, we have had substitute availability. And actually, during the coming out of COVID phase, we engaged in a process of establishing building-based subs. So we wanted to kind of incentivize substitutes to commit to the school district. So there's a few things that we engaged in, and a number of school districts also did this. One, we increased our pay rate, and we partnered with, you know, a substitute service. So there is a fee, I guess you can call it, that we're paying them to kind of manage the substitute pool. But we did increase our subpay to be competitive. We also placed a slight premium on substitutes that would agree to being available at least three days a week within a particular school. We tagged those substitutes to be considered building-based subs. In addition, the high school uses something that you may all know as the puddle, which is not one of my favorite things. But typically, or historically, at the high school, if a teacher were to be out for one day. Then, just based on, you know, subavailability, we would indicate to teachers that they would not need to request a sub, because they would only be out for a day. After COVID, we kind of began to adjust that, starting with our special educators, if they were out, we indicated they should be requesting a substitute. And then, as time progressed, we've advised all teachers to indicate that they need a substitute at the high school. It has not resulted in the puddle immediately drying up, but it's definitely reduced the amount of students who are occupying it. So I think what we've noticed is that, definitely at the high school, increased substitute availability is a variable. That I think has increased the pricing here, the cost factor associated with it. I'll also say our building-based subs, and we're taking a look at that right now. As much as we appreciate that, we're watching that, and also what we're watching is just attendance overall, right? Because, you know, we can only use, we only need to use a substitute service if substitutes are needed. So we're in the process of assessing that, but I do think, you know, the building-based sub need that we had, and also the increased, I'll call it, access or requests. For substitutes at the high school, I think are contributing factors to that. But I'll get back to the board, a little bit more of a specific cause, and how we're looking to remedy that moving forward.
I appreciate that. Have we seen an increase? I know you were looking into it, but an increase in attendance, in attendance, you know, attendance not, people not being in attendance?
Absenteeism.
Absenteeism, thank you for-
No, you know what, I'll get back-
Based on the change in the state law?
I'll get back to you.
Okay, thanks.
We're kind of like, we're doing some comparison data right now, three to five year look back.
Okay, thanks. But overall, thank you, this is very informative, and there's lots of great points on here, where we are still saving money despite losing money from the state aid. Thank you.
Slide eighteen, right, TGES, so it mentions classroom purchase services and other costs. I just want to understand, what are those purchase services and those costs? TGES, yeah, the last one.
Right, so we have, you know, a good example, right now, we work- The purchase service, yeah, the, what's the writing, the- So like, we have like, written out loud. So sometimes we bring in companies to work with our students, to provide educational service. So we have a program called Written Out Loud, this is a great example. And they come in and they work with our young readers, and they actually make them published authors. So they work with students and they publish books, we just had an event, probably what, a few weeks ago, we had a presentation in this room, it was standing room only. So stuff like that, that we bring in, that supplement the, you know, the services-
Speakers or like authors, those kind?
Purchase services could also be, whether it's supports or, yeah, it could be Leader and Me, right? So for example, K two, Leader and Me, Franklin Covey, we partnered with them this year for our K two schools. We've adopted a whole school-wide approach, which comes with a professional development component, as well as a student learning component. So that's another example of the purchase services. And then some of our, depending on how folks are categorized, some of the professional development that we may have for staff could be tagged under purchase services. So it's kind of just things that we are using to enhance the educational program that we have. Not, I don't really, I don't really want to say one-time speakers, it could fit, but that, that's, it doesn't happen that often for it to be a noticeable budgetary need. But thinking about those things like Written Out Loud and Leader and Me that are more ongoing supports throughout the year.
Got it. So comparatively, where the state average, right, we, EWRSD, it's like high, right? So is there any uniform thing that they circulate those speakers around, and we avail these services? Or like, you know, we kind of have separate services, like, you know, we reach out to them and bring them in?
You know what I'd say, I mean, it depends, I mean, in the educational space, there are, there are certain, I'll call them vendors or service providers. That have, that we, we become aware of either through participation at a conference, through participation at a roundtable, superintendent's roundtable meeting. Where there could be a group presenting, or schools that have used something that we think is valuable, and you kind of share that information. Sometimes we, you know, and oftentimes, if we're going to explore something, like, for example, I was at a conference at the end of the year. Came across an approach to support the teaching of math. So we engaged in some meetings with this particular company. Obviously, we weren't looking to partner with them to replace what we do, but to supplement what we do. We didn't, we ended up pausing, because we typically would like to sample them before we commit. But that's kind of an example of, you know, how things surface, oftentimes, it can happen through a conference. Oftentimes, it's a best practice, and we're like, out there exploring what we think we can do based on a felt need within a school, or department, or a classroom. And then we do our research, we try to vet, to ensure that we've got something that we're going to commit to financially, that we think has some academic benefit to students.
And is, sorry, is there a cap on that max budget, where we spend on that, for the purchase service or cost?
Yeah, we allocate lines, we have line items for how we, whether it's purchase services. We also have, we didn't get into that tonight, but part of our budget entails title monies. So federal funds connected to supporting various students, but really, at its core, supporting students that have financial need. So Title I enables us to engage in some supports to offset the cost of educational materials and supplies as well. And purchase services also falls within that. So title monies serve as a supplemental arm for us, that I have to say that we appreciate having access to. Obviously, there's some, there's a criteria for how those funds can be used. But we look at those as being funds in addition to what we're talking about tonight.
Thank you, thank you so much.
I actually, my question kind of picks up right where that kind of was headed.
I actually, my question kind of picks up right where that kind of was headed. Um on the budget, I see that there's a significant reduction from last year in our revenue from federal sources for SEMI. Can you speak to that?
Yeah, SEMI. So SEMI is a uh process where we have students who are Medicare Medicaid eligible. And basically, they receive service from us and we can get reimbursement through the Medicare Medicaid process for that. This, we just got notice, once again, this was another surprise, which took everyone in the state by surprise. Everyone's SEMI has been drastically reduced. Now, what they're saying is they're coming to a new formula, which ultimately should give us more money. That is yet to be seen, like, I will believe it when we say it, but that's what we're being told. So I had asked very pointedly at one of our county roundtable meetings, so does that mean next year that, once this is established, when you give us our new revenue numbers, this will go up? And they have not committed to that. So this is gonna probably be something like the extraordinary aid that I talked about, where we budget a low number and a large number shows up and it's basically, we'll be treated like found money and it'll go as excess surplus and, you know, fall to others, other projects.
So, but you're basically figuring in that we're only receiving an eighth of it. So whatever we need to support those students.
So that, yeah, they give us the number. We don't, so like, we're extraordinary aid, I guesstimate. Here, they actually give you a report and there's an edit in the software. If you don't use their number, you have to explain why. So we just use their number because it makes things a lot easier.
Any other questions? If you have them, obviously, you know who to reach out to, alright?
Could you just turn your mic on for the audience, please?
I'm saying whoever made this presentation, it's awesome, like, you know, deserves appreciation for the PowerPoint and the content in it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, if no one has any more questions, we'll move on to item four, superintendent's report.
Alright, so good evening again. Just a few um updates this evening. We'll begin just by thanking Sanjana this evening for her informative, always informative student representative report. Definitely appreciate um that student voice uh throughout the school year, so thank you. Also, do wanna just uh thank our business uh office and business administrator, Paul Todd, really just for the budget preparation and management throughout the year. Um, you know, it's a it's a collective effort to develop and also um kind of just process the budget throughout the year and and there are multiple hands that play a role in that. But I do believe that the business department, the business office kind of serves as the um kind of the gatekeepers and the shepherds of that led by by Paul, so definitely appreciate his leadership uh kind of keeping us all in line there with the budget. Um, just wanna talk a little bit about the middle school principal position. So on tonight's agenda, there's a recommendation uh for the principal of Melvin H. Creps Middle School. I'm excited uh to share uh the pending board approval. Dr. Alba Lugo will be appointed as the next principal of Melvin H. Creps Middle School. Dr. Lugo currently serves as the principal of Lindenwald Middle School in Camden County. Uh Dr. Lugo has also served as an assistant principal in New Brunswick Public Schools and a world language teacher uh in the East Brunswick Public Schools. Uh so after participating in a rigorous and thorough selection process with a pool of quality candidates, Alba has emerged with the appropriate disposition, experience, skill set, vision uh needed to nurture and navigate the continued educational journey and growth uh of uh Melvin H. Creps Middle School. Just wanna give a little plug here to, uh this is connected to our strategic plan, uh goal five, culture, climate. We uh shared this before, but we recently, and we're in the process actually, of engaging our students in grades three through twelve in the New Jersey School Climate Survey. Uh that's a tool that's been um developed with Rutgers in partnership with the New Jersey Department of Education. Uh obviously, the the main goal of that survey is to gain multiple perspectives uh on school climate. So in addition to our students completing that and providing us with some feedback, you know, which will enable us to identify some areas of strength, but obviously areas for growth, we're excited about just getting a sense of what that data will will yield. In addition to student feedback, the survey process will also in entail uh feedback from our staff. So we're in the process of completing that. Some schools have completed it. Uh some schools have yet to complete it, but we should be done, our goal is to complete that by the end of this month. The third arm is related to um families or I'll call them parents, or, right? So we want some parent feedback. So I'm putting out a little uh ad here. So we have sent the information home to families, asking them to complete the survey. I realize people are busy, so it's it's probably not always something that's uh top of mind, but we would appreciate getting some parental feedback. The survey is anonymous. It shouldn't take more than about twenty minutes to complete it. Uh it's voluntary, but once again, we will take this feedback uh from families. And I think, you know, it it ultimately focuses on, you know, viewpoints on school safety, teaching and learning, relationships. Uh but I think it's important to get a parental voice as it relates to completing that. And once again, it will it will enable us to assess where we are, to continue to build on areas that we think are strong. But also will provide some feedback for us in terms of ways in which we can uh enhance our school uh environments, okay? So I would urge folks to complete that. Uh you can do one survey. If you've got students in multiple buildings, if you believe that your feedback kind of reflects that. Or you can do more than one, you know, you can do it per building, uh where your child is a student. It's up to you. But I would definitely uh ask you to to find some time to complete that. And uh with that said, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Mark, can you tell us when that came out? Cause I don't remember seeing that.
You know what, it's going to come out in ca- so here's what I'm gonna tell you. I'll tell you this. This week, so so don't worry, this week on Friday, the amazing Elise Mattioli, who is here tonight, she's gonna make sure it is included in the weekly update, alright? So I, this is a, this is another reason for every member of the community to take a look at the weekly update. So principals this week though, starting today, you're, you know, I don't wanna put Mr. Vincent under any pressure, but principals starting today will be resending the survey to families. Some some principals have already done it, but we we asked them to do a a reminder today, alright? Um but but if if, when in doubt, Friday, check the weekly update. We'll probably put it in there for two weeks. We'll do this Friday and also next Friday. So when when in doubt, that's where you'll find it, okay? Thank you, thank you for reminding me to 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 clarify that. There is a chance, based on this conversation tonight, that the high school may be sending theirs out as soon as possible. Alright, as soon as, as soon as possible. So there you go, very sensitive. But yes, but but in all honesty, schools will be, principals will be resending the survey. Like I looked at G and R, Mrs. Emerson sent hers out this afternoon again. You'll be getting them from the principals this week. In addition, we'll make sure it's in the weekly update on Friday.
It was sent on Wednesday, and I mean, at least for Creps.
Okay.
I got it, I I did, it took like less than ten minutes, but the only um my only opinion is that on the same survey, once you finish, if you have multiple kids in different, their school, you should be able to pick your school instead. Uh have to wait for the high schools want to be sent in.
Oh, I see, I see.
Which I think is is the only down part in there. So if I'm done with the middle school, I should be able to finish that, go back, pick the high school and then do the one for the high school and get it done instead of waiting for the high school. But our story is coming on soon.
It is. But so so what I'll say to you is, that's good, that's good feedback. Because this is the first time that we've done this and we don't create it, you know, we don't have the ability to manipulate it like that. So knowing that, I think if we do it again, I think we'll make sure that ju- we just coordinate when we send it out at the same time. And it would just be, but I don't think we, we're in a position to alter the structure of the of the survey and how it's delivered. We can't manipulate that, so I can't create a drop-down menu. But we can explore that. If we created the survey, we could do that. We're just disseminating, alright? But but I appreciate that feedback.
Uh Mark, I had a couple of questions. Um this survey, they, for the younger kids, I'm hoping it's not twenty minutes for the little ones. I'm hoping this is done online survey for the kids to take and when do they take it? And uh what's the timeline, like for a third grader versus a middle schooler? Are the, all the issues that's addressed in the middle school also addressed in a Lehman's term for, let's say, third grader? Are the questions the same or they're different?
Give me a lot of questions in one day.
I did say a couple of questions.
See if I can process that. So when I say twenty minutes, twenty minutes is max, right? So it's, it shouldn't take very long. Some students may take twenty minutes, right? You know, obviously, de- developmentally, things are modified depending on if you're a third grade student versus a a junior. We have allocated and schools are kind of handling this in their own way, where they're determining the pocket of time that they're gonna dedicate to that. It is online. It's an online assessment. Um what was, what was the last thing you asked me? Is this, is this addressing your questions? Anything else? I wanna make sure I have it covered. Um, like I said, the goal is to get this completed I I, by the end of this month, so we can get the turnaround. So when we gather the the feedback from the state, we can begin to process it, look for trends, and then, uh I know for us, our goal, the next, well, I I think I'll have it before that, but part of the next wellness committee will be for us to share with the board uh what we've noticed kind of from a macro level, uh but also from a school standpoint regarding some trends, alright?
The survey in in other districts or?
This is a statewide survey.
Statewide, so everyone is participating.
It's not, it's not a, it's not a mandatory survey. So school districts have choice over whether or not they they're opting to do it. Uh I attended a conference in last year uh regarding the school climate. Uh there was a presentation uh that was facilitated by a a representative from Rutgers and the Department of Education. And there were several school districts that were that were attending that had engaged in, and they thought that the feedback was useful in terms of them just having a sense of uh how they can enhance their school climate and and also just some affirmation regarding some of the things that they thought were working well. So not not a have to, but it is done across the state. So part of the data will also enable us to kind of see where we fare, I believe, with comparable districts across the state as well, in terms of feedback.
Any cause to us?
No, no cause.
Thank you.
That should be your first question.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 no cause.
It came, thank you.
No cause, no cause.
Any other questions? Okay, so now we'll move on to our first opportunity for board member comments. There being none, we will move on to our first opportunity for public comment. Uh there being none, we will move on to executive session and we will be away twenty? Uh we'll be away for about thirty minutes. Thank you very much. We'll be back. Uh, we'll be away for about thirty minutes. Thank you very much. We'll be back.
Okay, we are back in session. And we will move on to old business, our 2025 committee meetings.
Yeah, I can. So, um, the curriculum committee met last, it feels like it was Tuesday. Um, we reviewed the policies that are up for first reading this week. And we also discussed, um, resuming the policy audit that was begun last year. And we will continue with the review, um, with our next meeting coming up in, yeah, the twenty-fourth.
Wellness got moved, it didn't meet today.
And item B?
So, item B is about Oprah. You know, we've talked a little bit about the uptick in the Oprah that we've seen. Um, the district has always supported, um, and believes strongly that the public has a right to, you know, be in tune with what we're doing and have access to public records. And we have always supported that. Um, but there has been an uptick in requests, especially around emails, which are fine. Um, but, but the manner in which they're being asked is the requests are coming up with thousands of emails. And what has to happen to make sure that number one, sensitive information, because sometimes students' names are in those emails, staff names are in the emails, is that I have to review each one to make sure there's nothing in those emails that needs to be redacted. So, sometimes that could take days just on one request. So, we still believe even though that's very time consuming, the public still has a right for it. But we, we believe that according to the Oprah handbook and the Oprah laws. There we go. Is that better? Thank you. Um, that these requests, you know, thousands of, of emails. So, um, by the Oprah regulations, we are allowed to, to charge what they call special service charge, which we've been reluctant to do. But seeing that they're coming so frequently now, uh, it seems that I think we need to kind of put this in place. So, it's pretty much self-explanatory. And I, I put it on old business really just because we haven't done it before. And I just want to make like kind of a public notice so everyone's aware that it's in place. So, it doesn't look like it's arbitrary and we're just starting something and just charging certain people. So, this would be, you know, across the board. So, this doesn't, you know, really relate to if someone wants a document, that's no problem. I answered Oprah the other day, there was four pieces of, uh, documents that I gave them. Like, that would not be subject to this. This would be only the requests when there's, you know, hundreds upon hundreds and thousands of, uh, documents that have to be reviewed.
Thank you for that explanation, Paul. So, we'll now move on to second opportunity for comments, for board member comments. Any board members have any questions or comments? Okay, um, I did have one. Mark, can you give us a quick update on the man trap at the Hystown High School where we're at? It looks like we're gonna be hopefully finishing up soon?
Certainly. Um, I actually meant to include this in my report. I, I, I decided to hold on it because it's not one hundred percent completed. But I will say that the, um, the converted office space, that, uh, one portion will become the security check-in booth, uh, with the exterior waiting area, as well as an opportunity to, 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 if needed, provide access to the security area internally that's a secured space. Uh, the other side of that, uh, converted office space will be, uh, space for, uh, an assistant principal and the assistant principal's secretary. I am pleased to share that the assistant principal and her secretary are scheduled to, to move in to their office space tomorrow. So, uh, the space looks great. I'll share some pictures with the board. Um, the security side, uh, is still in the process of being finalized. I anticipate that two weeks, I actually stopped by today. I think then in about two weeks from now, that area should be completed. Obviously, there's a few things that need to occur as it relates to inspections. Um, but I anticipate early part of, uh, April, we should be, uh, up and running as it relates to utilizing that as our, um, visitor, uh, access process for the high school.
Thank you, Mark. Can I ask a question on that? So, students will still go in the main doors. If students come in late, would they, will there still be the buzzer that works at the main doors? Or will you only go in through the special?
Yeah, I think the goal will be that once we secure the doors, you'll, everyone will enter through the, the, the security, the new security area. We're gonna migrate from the current security booth over to, to the area connected to the office. If you're a late student, you should be entering through the, the new security vestibule.
So, if you're, if you're a parent and you're dropping off?
Go through there.
A Chromebook? Will you go through there? And then, will there be a new table to put your stuff on?
Yeah, so the way it's, the way that it's, um, designed currently is that, you know, in this, we'll kind of try this on for size. So, there may be something in the, we've got the glass, that's called the greenhouse, right? There may be something there. Obviously, we're looking to limit access to the building. There's also, uh, an access window, a service window of sorts. We may devise something where folks are actually providing that Chromebook to someone in security through the window. So, that's something along those lines. But they will not be, you need to come into the foyer to do any business.
So, are you gonna then, is there plans to do something then in the lobby now with the security? Will you still have security people sitting in that booth?
Right now, we don't really need to. Um, but we've got some technology and some other apparatus in there that would determine how we're looking to transition. So, we need to repurpose that security booth. All right? Just don't know exactly what we're doing with it at this point. It's not the biggest space in the world, but there's some, like I said, there's some equipment in there that we may, at least temporarily, leave there to utilize when, when needed. But ultimately, we're going to repurpose that room.
I think it would be such a great opportunity to redecorate that lobby.
Oh, I think we will. Yes, we will.
The floor and just make it look nice.
Yes, we certainly will.
Take the winter paintings off. I think it could look so nice.
Yeah, we, uh, we have great potential. Thank you.
Um, so in terms of safety, right? The security check, it's gonna be like proof of ID they're gonna present? And after that, they are let in?
Well, it depends. Um, depends what your purpose is in the building. But obviously, there'll be a, um, the right now, we are, the, the issue that we currently have at the high school is that if you're a visitor to the high school, based on the current design, you are actually entering the high school to state your business. And really, you should be outside, or at least in an area that is not directly accessible, uh, to the school foyer, to, 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 to indicate, uh, what you're looking to do. So, yeah, we'll follow our same protocol in terms of, you know, identifying who you are and what, what your, what your business is. The current structure though, for example, enables us, if you're there for an appointment, there's a, there's an ability to wait in a secure space until someone comes down to, to meet you and walk you to where you need to go within the building. Versus potentially being in the foyer of the high school, which really provides you access, uh, to hallway. So, it just kind of restricts, uh, visitors', um, movement, uh, based on what we think it should be.
Um, safety being first priority, right? So, uh, any steps or any ideas around like, you know, uh, where anybody, if somebody brings weapons, how to, how, how is it like, you know, being handled or till now, no, no clue?
Yeah, so if you're asking me about, uh, detection, uh, apparatus? Yeah, we, we've, we've explored, uh, options for that. Um, you know, we could have some further conversation as a board. I, I, I'm not recommending that at this point. Um, I, I'll be frank, I don't want to treat our children like they're in a jail. And, um, I think we have expectations that students should not be bringing those items to school. Um, I don't, I don't want to be in an, I don't think it's healthy to be in an environment where students are walking through metal detectors each day as they come to school. That does not convey, in my opinion, a sense of welcome and trust. However, um, I, I'm also a realist. And I know that it can only take one unfortunate circumstance, uh, for us to potentially rethink that. So, right now, we do not have definitive plans to have detection equipment. Um, but, but I would not completely rule that out, uh, as, as we, as we move further down the road. Fortunately, in our community, uh, that has not been something that we've had to deal with firsthand. But I, but I realize we're in America and we're not immune to some of those, those potential ills that can occur. But, um, no, so to answer your question, we have not had, had definitive plans to put that in place at this time.
Yeah, I think that's a point for discussion for future, right?
Certainly, certainly.
Thank you.
Any other board member comments? There being none, we'll open up a second opportunity for public comments. Any members of the public wish to comment? There being no members of the public, we will now move to our, um, to number nine.
Policies to be abolished. Uh, A, policy zero one six four dot six, remote public board meetings during a declared emergency.
Second. Pull the board, please.
Ms. Concepcion?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Ms. LaRusso?
Yes.
Mr. Laverty?
Okay, we are back in session. And we will move on to old business, our 2025 committee meetings.
Yeah, I can do business. So the curriculum committee that last, it feels like it was Tuesday. We reviewed the policies that are up for first reading this week. And we also discussed resuming the policy audit that was begun last year. We will continue with the review. With our next meeting coming up in, yeah, the 24th.
Wellness got moved, it didn't meet today.
And item B?
So item B is about Oprah. You know, we've talked a little bit about the uptick in the Oprah that we've seen. The district has always supported and believes strongly that the public has a right to, you know, be in tune with what we're doing and have access to public records. And we have always supported that. But there has been an uptick in requests, especially around emails, which are fine. But, but the manner in which they're being asked is the requests are coming up with thousands of emails. And what has to happen to make sure that number one, sensitive information, because sometimes students' names are in those emails, staff names are in the emails, is that I have to review each one to make sure there's nothing in those emails that needs to be redacted. So sometimes that could take days just on one request. So we still believe, even though that's very time consuming, the public still has a right for it. But we, we believe that according to the Oprah handbook and the Oprah laws. There we go. Is that better? Thank you. That these requests, you know, thousands of, of emails. So by the Oprah regulations, we are allowed to, to charge what they call special service charge, which we've been reluctant to do. But seeing that they're coming so frequently now, it seems that I think we need to kind of put this in place. So it's pretty much self-explanatory. And I, I put it on old business really just because we haven't done it before. And I just want to make like kind of a public notice so everyone's aware that it's in place. So it doesn't look like it's arbitrary and we're just starting something and just charging certain people. So this would be, you know, across the board. So this doesn't, you know, really relate to if someone wants a document, that's no problem. I answered Oprah the other day, there was four pieces of documents that I gave them. Like that would not be subject to this. This would be only the requests when there's, you know, hundreds upon hundreds and thousands of documents that have to be reviewed.
Thank you for that explanation, Paul. So now move on to second opportunity for comments, for board member comments. Any board members have any questions or comments? Okay, I did have one. Mark, can you give us a quick update on the man trap at the Hystown High School where we're at? It looks like we're going to be hopefully finishing up soon.
Certainly. I actually meant to include this in my report. I, I, I decided to hold on it because it's not 100% completed. But I will say that the, the converted office space, that one portion will become the security check-in booth, with the exterior waiting area as well as an opportunity to, 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 if needed, provide access to the security area internally that's a secured space. The other side of that converted office space will be space for an assistant principal and the assistant principal's secretary. I am pleased to share that the assistant principal and her secretary are scheduled to, to move in to their office space tomorrow. So the space looks great. I'll share some pictures with the board. The security side is still in the process of being finalized. I anticipate that two weeks, I actually stopped by today. I think that in about two weeks from now, that area should be completed. Obviously, there's a few things that need to occur as it relates to inspections. But I anticipate early part of April, we should be up and running as it relates to utilizing that as our visitor access process for the high school.
Thank you, Mark. Can I ask a question on that? So students will still go in the main doors. If students come in late, would they, will there still be the buzz, buzzer that works at the main doors? Or will you only go in through the special?
Yeah, I think the goal will be that once we secure the doors, you'll, everyone will enter through the, the, the security, the new security area. We're going to migrate from the current security booth over to, to the area connected to the office. If you, if you're a late student, you should be entering through the, the new security vestibule.
So if you're, if you're a parent and you're dropping off?
Go through there.
A Chromebook?
Everyone will go there.
Will you go through there and then will there be a new table to put your stuff on?
Yeah, so the way it's, the way that it's designed currently is that, you know, and this, we'll kind of try this on for size. So there may be something in the, we've got the glass, that's called the greenhouse, right? There may be something there. Obviously, we're looking to limit access to the building. There's also an access window, a service window of sorts. We may devise something where folks are actually providing that Chromebook to someone in security through the window. So that's something along those lines. But they will not be, you need to come into the foyer to do any business.
So are you gonna then, is there plans to do something then in the lobby now with the security? Will you still have security people sitting in that booth?
Right now, we don't really need to. But we've got some technology and some other apparatus in there that would determine how we're looking to transition. So we need to repurpose that security booth. All right? Just don't know exactly what we're doing with it at this point. It's not the biggest space in the world, but there's some, like I said, there's some equipment in there that we may, at least temporarily, leave there to utilize when, when needed. But ultimately, we're going to repurpose that room.
I think it would be such a great opportunity to redecorate that lobby.
Oh, I think we will, yes, we will.
The floor and just make it look nice.
Yes, we certainly will.
Take the winter paintings off. I think it could look so nice.
Yeah, we, we have great potential. Thank you.
So in terms of safety, right, the security check, it's going to be like proof of ID they're going to present? And after that, they are let in?
Well, it depends. Depends what your purpose is in the building. But obviously, there'll be a, the, right now, we are, the, the issue that we currently have at the high school is that if you're a visitor to the high school, based on the current design, you are actually entering the high school to state your business. And really, you should be outside, or at least in an area that is not directly accessible to the school foyer to, 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 to indicate what you're looking to do. So, yeah, we'll follow our same protocol in terms of, you know, identifying who you are and what, what your, what your business is. The current structure, though, for example, enables us, if you're there for an appointment, there's a, there's an ability to wait in a secure space until someone comes down to, to meet you and walk you to where you need to go within the building. Versus potentially being in the foyer of the high school, which really provides you access to hallway. So it just kind of restricts visitors' movement based on what we think it should be.
Safety being first priority, right? So any steps or any ideas around like, you know, where anybody, if somebody brings weapons, how to, how, how is it like, you know, being handled? Or till now, no, no clue?
Yeah, so if you're asking me about detection apparatus? Yeah, we, we, we've, we've explored options for that. You know, we can have some further conversation as a board. I, I, I'm not recommending that at this point. I, I'll be frank, I don't want to treat our children like they're in a jail. And I think we have expectations that students should not be bringing those items to school. I don't, I don't want to be in an, I don't think it's healthy to be in an environment where students are walking through metal detectors each day as they come to school. That does not convey, in my opinion, a sense of welcome and trust. However, I, I'm also a realist. And I know that it can only take one unfortunate circumstance for us to potentially rethink that. So right now, we do not have definitive plans to have detection equipment. But, but I would not completely rule that out as, as we, as we move further down the road. Fortunately, in our community, that has not been something that we've had to deal with firsthand. But I, but I realize we're in America and we're not immune to some of those, those potential ills that can occur. But no, so to answer your question, we have not had, had definitive plans to put that in place at this time.
I think that's a point for discussion for future, right?
Certainly, certainly.
Thank you.
Any other board member comments? There being none, we'll open up a second opportunity for public comments. Any members of the public wish to comment? There being no members of the public, we will now move to our, to number nine.
Policies to be abolished. A, policy 0164 dot six, remote public board meetings during a declared emergency.
Second. Pull the board, please.
Ms. Concepcion?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Ms. LaRusso?
Yes.
Mr. Lavery? Mr. Lavery? We're working it out. Ms. Mahiri?
Yes.
Ms. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Weeks? Mr. Weeks, sorry, sir.
Yes.
Ms. Lance?
Yes.
So what are you asking me to do, Bob? You can hear me now? Got it.
Okay, item 10?
Mandated policies for first reading. Item A, policy 2200, curriculum content. Item B, policy 3160, physical examination. Item C, policy 4160, physical examination. Item D, policy 5350, student suicide prevention. Item E, policy 8420, emergency and crisis situations. Item F, policy 8467, firearms and weapons.
Second. Any questions?
Yes, I have a question. Policy 2020, uh, 2220. I'm going through all this cross-out things. I need a clarification for the paragraph where it says the curriculum will be reviewed by the soup N, then it's crossed off by approved annually by the board. Reason why we're doing that. Second, uh, the second line says the superintendent is responsible for implementing the curriculum approved by the board. So I was just trying to find out why, what's the discrepancy there? And the third thing I have is a lot of stuff is crossed off. Is this implemented in another policy number? Or why are these crossed off? Thank you.
Oh, it's okay. So, so the, um, the reason is, the first part, curriculum will be reviewed by the superintendent. And then the approved annually is because the curriculum does not need to be approved annually if it's already approved. All right? So that's the first part. The crossing outs are just updating of language. So the crossing out, excuse me, was, was actually done by Strauss Esme related to just some of the modifications. For example, curriculum content standards has been crossed out, which is an outdated, which is outdated language and has been replaced with student learning standards. I'm not sure if, what else you were questioning. Like specif, if you're going to tell me something specifically.
Everything is crossed out, so I'm just trying to understand. I understand it's outdated. So when will you be putting the new updated language? And will it be addressed in this policy or will it be another one?
Yeah, no, it'll be in this, this policy. What they, what this policy is doing is just condensing what was already there. And it's just kind of making it a little bit more concise. I'll, I'll say that for lack of a better word, but it really doesn't change the essence of, you know, obviously, curriculum needs to be approved. Adoption of courses need to be approved. That, that does not change. And also, high school graduation requirements need to be approved.
So your 14 bullet points that are addressed separately here are in on the previous paragraph?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Pull the board, please.
Ms. Concepcion?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Did we second? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Ms. LaRusso?
Yes.
Mr. Lavery?
Yes.
Ms. Mahiri?
Yes.
Ms. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Weeks?
Yes.
Ms. Lance?
Yes.
Item 11?
Recommended policies for first reading. Item A, policy 5337, service animals. Item B, policy 9181, volunteer athletic coaches and co-curricular activity advisors and assistants.
Second. Any questions? Pull the board, please.
Ms. Concepcion?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Ms. LaRusso?
Yes.
Mr. Lavery?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Mahiri?
Yes.
Ms. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Weeks?
Yes.
Ms. Lance?
Yes.
Item 12?
Mandated regulations for first reading. Item A, regulation 4160, physical examination. Item B, regulation 5200, attendance. Item C, regulation 8467, firearms and weapons. Item D, regulation 3160, physical examination.
Second. Any questions? Pull the board, please.
Ms. Concepcion?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Ms. LaRusso?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Lavery?
Yes.
Ms. Mahiri?
Yes.
Ms. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Weeks?
Yes.
Ms. Lance?
Yes.
Item 13?
Motion to approve routine items by exception. Having read the materials received, I move that the board approve the routine agenda items as submitted. Item A, staffing of March 10th, 2025. B, EWEA sidebar yoga club. Item C, approved new field trip site for upcoming trip. Item D, approved travel and related expenses, virtual and in-person. Item E, out-of-district placement. Item F, approval of tentative 2025 to 2026 budget. Item G, bid approval auditorium renovations phase two. Item H, board meeting minutes for February 24th, 2025. Item I, executive session board minutes, February 24th, 2025. Item J, report of the board secretary and financials report, January 2025. Item K, expense and transfer reports of school monies report for January 2025. Item L, bill list of March 10th, 2025.
Second. Any questions? Pull the board, please.
Ms. Concepcion?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Ms. LaRusso?
Yes.
Mr. Lavery?
Yes, and thank you for the accommodations tonight.
Thank you for participating. Ms. Mahiri?
Yes.
Ms. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Weeks?
Yes.
Ms. Lance?
Yes, however, on item D, I will abstain from any of the line, line items related to myself. Yes, to all others. And item H, I just wanted to place a reminder in the record that the board minutes should reflect a change showing that Michael Weeks was present and Kavitha Mahiri was absent.
Thank you.
We have no need for a second executive session this evening. So thank you for all being here and we will conclude our meeting.